It's 5:30. I will call this regular International Falls City Council meeting to order. Please rise. We'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the council are present this evening for the record. Moving on to the agenda, I had handed out three additions. There's actually two as one will take place in January. The two being a proclamation for National Rural Health Day. That's November 20th, 2025, asked for by Ashley Hall, Rainy Lake Medical Center. The second to discuss and request a letter of support for ISD 361. Are there any other additions or deletions to this evening's agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the additions?
So move.
Thank you, Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Is there discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, agenda is approved unanimously with additions. Thank you. Next, approval of minutes from previous meetings. First, minutes of the Monday, October 6th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Second, minutes of the Monday, October 13th, 2025, committee of the whole meeting. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the minutes of items one and two if there's a motion to do so.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilor Kaler.
Second.
And Councilor Wagner, is there discussions on the minutes from previous meetings? Seeing none, question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, payment of claims and approval of accounts payable. First, transfers. City of International Falls transfers to Fund Number 401 Permanent Improvement, $33,333.33 is each from Water and Sewer to fund that. Next, to Fund 403 Reserve for Capital Outlay, There was $16,666.67 from Fund Number 601 Water and $12,500 from Number 603 Sewer for total transfers of $95,833.33. Moving on to accounts payable, City of International Falls claims, International Falls Public Library Board claims, For total accounts payable and claims, $387,095.71. If there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills and approve the transfers.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Holden.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Wagner. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, question.
Aye.
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 Although, yes, and payments in claims and transfers are approved unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we can begin the open forum portion of our audience. If we have members of the community or here that are to speak, you're welcome to come forward at this time.
Good evening. Austin Schaaf, 432 Sherwood Drive, International Falls, Minnesota.
Before you begin, Mr. Schaaf, it has come to my attention that during this open period that you're going to present as well as another provider. So I would ask the council at this time for up to 10 minutes for the presentation instead of five. Is the council amendable? Thank you. Please continue.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is Austin Schaaf with Three S Design LLC. We're a 20-year IT firm based in Apple Valley and as part owner, I'm now expanding our services here to International Falls, where I live full-time. We support organizations across the United States, including C2Cal, a mid-sized company with more than 50 employees, which has given us extensive experience managing larger and more complex environments. Our core focus is managed IT services, cybersecurity, and cloud modernization. For the past two years, I've also provided IT support for the Borderline Humane Society and I'm now working to bring that same level of reliability and responsiveness to the city of International Falls. Before I go into the plan, I'd like to make one point clear. I would be hiring a full-time IT employee who would work here on-site at the city every day, directly supporting your staff. I would manage and support that person and they would have the full resources of our entire IT team behind them. This gives the city the best of both worlds. A dedicated local technician backed by a professional IT department with deep expertise. And also, I would be open to doing any consulting if you do decide to hire someone internally. I would help out with that too if you guys needed. So now, here's why this model matters. Cities today face growing cybersecurity threats and increasing compliance requirements, especially in areas like law enforcement. Instead of relying on a single individual to handle everything, a managed IT approach provides a full team with broader experience, stronger security, and consistent coverage. It turns IT into a proactive, stable system instead of a constant reactive troubleshooting. In short, it reduces risk, reduces downtime, and creates lasting reliability for every department. Regarding Todd, the smoothest transitions happen when the outgoing provider is involved. Todd knows your system and with this cooperation, we can ensure a clean, well-documented handoff with no disruption to staff or services. So regardless of who you choose, I would highly recommend involving Todd in that transition. I've been a part of quite a few of these very similar types of transitions and when the old IT person is involved, it goes well. And when the old IT person isn't involved, it does not go well. So what I'd like to present is a 12-month modernization plan. In the first one to two months, we document your system, verify backups, secure administrative accounts, and begin 24/7 monitoring. In months three to four, we would create a Microsoft 365 government tenant, deploy SharePoint for internal communication, and strengthen identity and email security across the city. From months five through eight, we would onboard departments and phases, starting with non-critical users and then moving to the police department, finance, and leadership once everything is tested and stable. In months nine to 10, we would perform internal security checks and create a roadmap for year two. In months 11 and 12, we would provide cybersecurity training, finalize backup and alerting policies, and transition the city into a steady, fully managed support model. We've already proven ourselves locally. The Borderline Humane Society has trusted us for two years and they've described us as responsive, reliable, and quick to act, even during a potential security incident. That is the exact standard we'd bring to the city. And the Humane Society, I've just been doing it as a volunteer-type position. In closing, this proposal is about giving the city a secure, modern, and dependable technology foundation that will serve the staff and residents for years to come. I strongly believe the city will be best served by opening this to external bids rather than hiring internally. I'm going to pass out a detailed 12-month modernization plan and I'd encourage the city to follow this roadmap, no matter who you select, if it's, you know, internal or external, because it prioritizes security, stability, and accountability. Thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Austin. Thank you.
If you aren't bombarded with questions this evening, I'm sure you will be in the future. As we would, first of all, thank you for presenting, but this would most likely, as the council moves forward with making its determinations, go to our committee of the whole where we would spend a considerable amount of time discussing it and all the options. Because we already have discussed it, internal versus external. We've been having these discussions of how we're going to move forward.
Perfect. And like I say, if you need any help with that, feel free to reach out anytime. You all have my email, my phone. So if there's any questions with that, feel free. You know, I live here and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. I was gonna pull your chair out for you. Be gentle, men, and now. For starters, my name's Ted Saxton. I live at 622 12th Avenue in the Falls and I am the co-owner with Jim Yount of Small Town Tech. And that's what we're coming here to talk to today. So you need anything else before we start? All right. So we also do managed services. I do wanna just differentiate a couple of things. We will talk about our customers. However, we only talk about our customers who are on public record. For example, other cities that we manage technology for, like the city of Rainier or the city of Little Fork, other government entities that we already manage. However, we don't generally talk about commercial businesses. However, I mean, there's people sitting behind us that are our customers. I'm not gonna point them out. So we manage over 500 endpoints in town and I don't even, I guess I could look up how many network devices. But we also manage tons of networks, including the public library, which we've collaborated with Todd in the past on. So we started off about 10 years ago in town and kind of grown exponentially ever since and transformed in from a "we'll fix anything" type of shop to a managed services provider, which is basically what was just described. And so we won't rehash that. But essentially, we believe that, well, first off, the pitch is that we don't know your technology. Certainly, we would love to work with Todd to discover it. It'd be a formal process. What we're willing to offer is to do that process, the initialization of creating this sample report of like your needs, your wants, all that type of stuff. We're willing to do that for free in the hopes that you would use that to create an actual RFP. So then you could use that to actually decide between two managed service providers or three or four because we're not the only ones in this area. There's some bigger ones from Duluth that manage some people up here too. So then you create an official RFP based on your real needs and then we'll know what we're bidding on. For example, I don't want to do anything that doesn't make business sense. I don't like it, you guys, that much. So like, it's not gonna be a charity thing. It's either gonna make sense financially or it's not going to make sense financially for you guys to do in-house or out-of-house. You might find out that because we know how the evolution of this position has happened over the years that you might not even have what you need now based on what you need. I know that you outsourced some of the stuff to, with like your EDR and different things, endpoint detection response and stuff like that. So what we would also look at is like your vendor list. We work with many of them already, things like that. Anything you want to add on so far?
No, not really. That's pretty good. You know, we established our business 2017 because we just saw just an extreme need for local professional tech management. And as Teb is saying, every year we've kind of upped our game and evolved to, you know, the modern best practices of being a full managed service provider and kind of looking at everything comprehensively, getting to know our customers well, getting to know what they feel their needs are, giving some feedback on what those needs, how those needs might be reimagined and kind of even expanding beyond the organization's own vision for what could be done even better, kind of brainstorming together and playing well with other service providers to kind of deliver a comprehensive package.
So how it would look like also if you were going with a managed service provider like us, we have people, we would not have somebody here permanently unless that's what, you know, what we find out by through that investigation or reports or whatnot. But we would have a service-level agreement with guaranteed response times based on specific incidents. We'd love to have your legal team review it because my legal team is AI. And so you would have a certain level of service that you would just expect. Otherwise, we'd be penalized. Also, liability is also very important to me. And so we do, like even today, when I was working on some incidents response, it was important to document the communication with the client. That way, it's like we covered our butt, you know, and told them the right way to do it. So it's one of those things where we believe we can lead a horse to water and, but sometimes can't make him drink. Luckily with cities, you guys have the obligation to do like what's legal and right. So you have to, if you know something, if you know better, you have to do better or else you're liable yourselves. And so having this very technical report covering about like what you guys, what you would be liable for, what we'd be liable for, all that, what our vendors would be liable for would be included in that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I didn't come up with a presentation or anything like that. So does anybody want to hear a joke? Just kidding. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Audience, open forum is open at this time should anyone want to come forward. There's also an opportunity towards the end of the meeting. Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda this evening. To approve the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Liability Coverage Waiver Form, do not waive limits on municipal tort liability and authorize signatures to do so.
I'll move.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Buller. There is no discussion. I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And although, yes, consent agenda, the only item is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, new business, item one. Consider an appointment of Cynthia Adams to the Library Board of Trustees. Library Board has had an unexpected opening. And this would be to complete the open term of Michelle Misner, which is until December 2027. Discussion at this time or motion to consider the appointment as recommended by our library director?
So move.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, and Cynthia Adams is now appointed unanimously. Thank you. Two, new business, approved change order number one for the water treatment plant facility improvements, extending the completion date five months. As many in the community are following, the water treatment plant that the city owns is undergoing what appears to be a multi-year rehabilitation. Our engineer, Jason Fisher, is here. Is this something you'd like to explain?
If you guys have questions, I'd love to answer.
Just background info if you would, or I can provide, just to get the word out as this project goes on. Thank you.
Yeah, the water treatment plant is a C Mar project and in working with the project manager, the filters and equipment have a longer lead time than we initially anticipated. So they've requested a five-month extension on the contract. This will not increase cost of the project. It just shifts everything back five months. So just so that we'll get the equipment we need when we need it, so.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a motion to approve this change order at this time?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Holden.
Second.
Counselor Wagner, seconds. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, change order is approved unanimously. Thank you, Jason. New business, three. Adopt resolution approving application and permit for a one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for Falls Memorial Hospital doing business as Rainy Lake Medical Center for a Christmas party at Bacchus Community Center on January 17th, 2026.
So move.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, number three is approved unanimously. Thank you. Number four, new business from Public Works Committee. Item A, to consider replacement options for the Vector Garage overhead door. Is this something that we, Counselor Kaler, that we have clarity on? I believe we've received two bids.
Yes.
Is this something you would like Mike Wallace or Jason or Steve to come forward to discuss?
I think, just for the sake of people can hear and understand what's going on with the bids, whoever, which one of them feels.
So the reason that this is being discussed is, and don't quote me on the date, but I'll go back to the summer. The city attempted to bond for improvements to the Vector Garage in which ultimately we're petitioned for a vote or referendum, whatever that terminology specifically would be, that the bonding was denied by the public. During all of this process, the city has purchased a new Vector truck, which does not fit inside any building that we have or that is feasible for us to store it in. So being that the new Vector Garage will not fit the Vector, the next most logical step is to put a new door in the Vector Garage so that the Vector truck maintains warm and dry for the winter, Lord willing. And we have received two estimates. One from Up North Builders for $16,545. And we have also received an estimate from Myers Glass for a bi-fold door for $33,718.84. Counselor Kaler, do you have information to add or subtract?
No, just, I'd just like to add that we did know when we got the new Vector truck because there was issues with the other one with its loaded weight and stuff on the roads that we found out that when it was purchased, I don't know, 10 years ago, that it was over the limits for the tires or something. So we had to buy, had to get a new one because we need a Vector in town here and for the area. And when we did purchase it, we were also aware that we were gonna have to do some remodeling of some type to the garage there to store it. And that's how we got where we were. But other than that, I don't really have any other info that you haven't shared.
Being that winter appears to be on its way, is there a specific bid that you would like to move forward with?
I don't.
I know which one that I am going to be choosing, but if.
Yeah, no, I, my, the money wasn't explained to us why. The one was more expensive, the size of the door and stuff, but.
Our understanding.
You go ahead.
Our understanding was that Up North Builders has proposed basically a garage door like many of us have in our homes that tends to wear more over time. And Myers Glass has proposed an aircraft hangar bi-fold type door that has more longevity likely, but also costs twice as much for the sake of the conversation. We definitely have a big asset that we need to protect.
Both of those doors are insulated?
Yep. I believe the consensus from Public Works was, excuse me, to move forward with the lowest bid on the project.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Buller.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. More discussion?
Have we looked in any place that we can lease or rent to store the truck?
Steve Crosby was reaching out to Manco. Mr. Wallace, has there, do you know, has there any update on areas that it could be stored?
Yeah, Manco, I talked to them again today. They did not, he did not get back to me, you know, feel comfortable giving me a price due to the fact that his business partner doesn't return until tomorrow. The sewer district said we could store it there for free right now. Although we should have no longer than the end of November, beginning of December, a new door on. So they were willing to store it for free.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
And I would add with the motion to purchase the door and installation from Up North Builders that if we have a lot of water and sewer problems, any time of year that the back truck is in and out constantly. So I don't think it's a long-term solution to put it somewhere on a, you know, on a handshake. We're thankful that the sewer district will allow it as we get an order. But we do need a home for it.
A home.
More discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Although, yes, motion carries for one. Thank you. New business, item five. Budget and finance recommendations. A, to approve Casell multiple module add-on proposal for the accounts payable and payroll module. We received a presentation from our finance officer, Emma Rudd, in our committee of the whole, or excuse me, our budget and finance committee. This will be in budgeted funds for 2026. There's a monthly fee and a one-time investment. And to condense this information, this would be what is needed essentially for the city to carry out its payroll functions, much like if we owned businesses and had a QuickBooks subscription or some way to do things like file W2s and issue them. Do you have any comments at this time, Ms. Rudd? We will let you know. Thank you. Discussion from Counselor, motions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler. Discussion reopens. Question?
Aye.
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 Although, yes, five A to approve the module for accounts payable is approved unanimously. Thank you. New business, five B, to approve weekly special budget and finance committee meetings beginning Tuesday, October 28th, 2026. beginning Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, at 1:00 P.M. And this would be until further notice, weekly, beginning October 28th. Is there a motion to approve scheduling these meetings? Hopefully, there is. Thank you, Counselor Buller. Is there support for Counselor Buller's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Is there discussion?
I would just like to point out that Tuesday, November 11th, is a free holiday, so I would just ask that it be noted that that meeting would not be held that day, and in place of that, we would just hold the meeting for that week, the day before, on Monday, when we would normally have our normal budget and finance meeting.
Are you amendable to that suggestion, Counselors Buller and Kaler?
Holden.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And then also to say that, and subject to, we don't think we're gonna have any info for a meeting the next Tuesday, you know, that there may not be one, that we may cancel it, or whatever.
Sure.
Yeah.
Meetings as needed, my guess is how one.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah. Good, good clarity for that. Thank you. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, meetings are approved unanimously to be scheduled. Thank you. Item six, many of recommendations coming forth from Committee of the Whole. Item A, approve moving forward with the design of the ban shell and author, excuse me, authorize soliciting bids for consideration by early December. This is something I would like to delegate to the ban shell committee and/or Betty to discuss where we're at in the process with it, and what we're attempting to do here.
Okay, so we're, Counselor Kaler and I and Betty are on the ban shell committee, and we have a, we have a picture now, or a drawing, and what Phil is ready for is to put out bids, or solicit, see if anybody wants to do the work. And in order for us to move forward, we have to prove this is gonna be the design, and the bids going forward to rebuild it.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. And part of the discussion in Committee of the Whole is, at this point, it's basically been decided what direction is being proceeded upon, and this step is to figure out a cost and proposal to do the project and to move forward. So it's really, is it fair to say it's unknown where that's even going to come in at, at this point in time?
Yeah, relatively. I mean, they're, they're aware of our parameters, but at this point, we're gonna get the bids, and then depending on how it worked from there, what we can do with what we have available. So, you know, if it comes back, you know, $2 million, well, you know, we'll shave some stuff off and see if we can do with what we have available from the charts. That's, have an idea, and I think there might be a couple versions even.
Yeah.
But just so we can get started and try and keep it on schedule.
Thank you. Would the ban shell committee consider motions to approve?
I will move.
Second. Thank you, first, Counselor Kaler, and second, Counselor Wagner. Is there discussion on moving forward with solicitation of bids?
I just want to thank Bob DeGrosse and Renee Wetbeck for citizen involvement, and Jim Lukachek, too, who was also part of the discussion.
Thank you to those folks involved. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, this is approved unanimously to move forward with bids for the ban shell. Thank you. Six B, to approve inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing from Houston-Gelveston area council. This is a piece presented by Chief, Fire Chief Minasa. This is a contract for purchasing for the fire department, similar to that of municipalities using a state bid list to be able to purchase equipment at municipal rates. Is that correct, Betty, in the description?
And it's not just equipment for fire and ambulance, it's other equipment as, similar to other state bids. There's numerous items on, in their realm of providing cooperative agreements with other municipalities.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this contract?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Kaler and Wagner. Is there discussion?
And just that there's no cost to this contract.
Yeah, no cost to this membership thing.
Thank you for clarifying. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, B is approved unanimously. Thank you. Six C, approve 2026 group Medicare Advantage Plus Plan, effective January 1st, 2026. Again, these are Committee of the Whole recommendations. This was presented by Human Resources Director Sherry Stenzlin. And for clarification, as understood, this is for 13 employees, but eight city, for their benefit, their retirement benefits and their pay own, meaning that the cost that they have to cover as part of the package.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Buller. I would like to thank Sherry for her work on this and pointing it out, because we will be, there is a cost savings with this plan. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, item C is approved unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item D, approve 2026 Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan 635, effective January 1st, 2026. This is a renewal, which includes a $1,000 annual health savings account. This plan provides coverage for the full-time, non-exempt library employees of the city. So this is simply a renewal of the policy that we've already had as we move towards 2026. If there's not questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Counselor Kaler, would you support that?
I'll second, yes.
Thank you. Discussion or clarification on this health plan? Seeing none, call the question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, and that plan is approved unanimously, item D. Thank you. E, to approve Minnesota paid leave policy.
I'll move. Second.
Thank you, Counselors Kaler and Wagner. This is a policy that we're updating based on state law. Is that correct, Sherry?
That is correct.
I don't think you need to come forward, but I just want to make it clear that this is probably what's considered an unfunded mandate, that a portion of increases the costs for the city to operate. So just wanted to point that out. Please, Counselor Wagner.
Is, are, is, are all the labor groups on board known with this?
Not yet.
Okay.
We are still working on the last, the last group we will meet next week, and that will be handled through a memorandum of understanding.
That is, yes.
And that is included in the policy.
Yep.
Referring them to their memorandum of understanding in regards to that.
Thank you. More discussion? Is there a motion to approve this policy? We have.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, and we have approved this policy unanimously. Thank you. Next, under Committee of the Whole recommendations, item F, to accept a safety grant from Min OSHA Workplace Safety and Authorized Matching Funds for security equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner, first, followed by Counselor Holden. For clarification, the grant has been approved for $4,136.12, which covers one-half of the total project cost. The remaining $4,136.12 would need to be covered by the city. Is there any anticipation of additional expense? No?
Not that I can think of.
Thank you. Call the question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, this carries unanimously, five-zero. Thank you. G, to consider a temporary wage adjustment for the Assistant Director of Public Works to act as the interim Director of Public Works until a replacement plan is established for the Director of Public Works position. This is an adjustment being proposed for Mr. Wallace. This was brought originally on the city council agenda, then brought back to Committee of the Whole for more clarification and discussion. With the former Public Works Director no longer being with the city, that has left Mr. Wallace covering his job as the assistant, and now as the Public Works Director. The salary adjustment, if I didn't already say this, is $5,000 to Mr. Wallace's annual salary, and would be retroactive to September 2nd, 2025. Is there discussion on the topic, or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Holden.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler. Is there more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, it is approved unanimously. Thank you. H, to approve hiring two Parks facilities' seasonal employees.
I'll move.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. And to add additional information, typically, Public Works would hire three part-time seasonal staff. This year's plan would be to proceed with two, as your motions indicate. There's been contingent offers upon council approval extended. For clarification, I believe this is for Parks and Recreation and Cary Park. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, that is approved unanimously. Number six, Committee of the Whole recommendations, letter I, to approve Derek Hell for the internal posting of the Maintenance Worker One Equipment Operator Plow Truck Position. This potion, this, excuse me, position was posted externally on September 2nd, and was approved then to be posted internally. Three employees signed the posting, and Public Works has extended a contingent offer to Derek Hell, in which I believe he would be leaving the Water Department. Is there a motion? Actually, before we do that, I would like to add that this was brought back to committee to discuss what the succession plan would ultimately be, or how that would occur, if we were to approve this internal transfer. With that, I would ask for a motion or a discussion.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Buller.
Second.
And Counselor Wagner, is there discussion on this internal transfer? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, that is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item J, to approve internally posting for the heavy equipment operator, meaning excavator and sweeper, position. This is to approve an internal posting for the position that Mr. Hell will be vacating as he moves to Maintenance Worker One. Is there a motion or discussion?
I would move to table this, or move it back to Public Works Committee to see if we actually need it, for the amount of time we actually use excavator. Do we need one position for it? And along with the sweeper, if, and I'm not all up on all the union rules and stuff, if we, if some other, somebody else couldn't operate, well, heavy equipment operators couldn't operate the excavator, or the street sweeper, when needed, if they weren't, like, running a loader or something. But I think it's an opportunity to take a look at, are there the positions needed?
So you've offered a motion to refer this back to Public Works Committee for a more in-depth, detailed discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler, then Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Is there any clarification needing on the change in motion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, item J is referred back to the next Public Works Committee meeting unanimously. Thank you. K, approve advertising for replacement of Information Systems Administrator. We've already had some presentations, but the city does need to move ahead formally with the process, whether that becomes internal or external, and what solution will work the best for the city ultimately. Is there a motion to approve advertising for the replacement?
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. And to clarify, in the packet, I believe that it also states that it would be internal, external, meaning RFPs for those who may want to serve the city, but not as an employee. Is that correct?
Okay, if I may.
It's okay.
Well, I guess we need to understand, you know, we had the presentations from the local, as they indicated, there's others in the community. Are we looking to hire an individual on staff, you know, full-time as our employee? Or are we looking to do an RFP for professional services? That is what you folks need to, you know, give us that guidance on doing. The gentleman, the two gentlemen that spoke today, three, excuse me, you know, that's more of a professional services, so that would be a request for proposals process versus advertising to hire an individual to serve as the IT Systems Administrator.
Thank you, Administrator. I would hope at this juncture that we could weigh all of the options, what the costs are, whether service is scalable in the future, and what those needs may be.
Oh, Mayor.
Please, or Counselor Wagner?
Yeah, I think, I think both, Betty. I think we get RFPs, and, and I think you advertise, maybe, maybe, I don't know if you can find somebody or not, but I'll see, you know, I think we have to have all options available to. options available to whichever way we go.
This is the second time this evening, I believe, there were motions made by Counselor Holden and you, Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't lost my mind yet. Thank you. More, well, more discussion, please. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. That is approved, as proposed by Counselors Holden and Wagner unanimously. Thank you. Next is item L. To approve an agreement with Todd Ojala to provide IT services on a temporary basis to the city. We have received a resignation from Mr. Ojala, would like to thank him for his service, and would also like to thank him for keep, offering to keep us running as the search ensues for a new provider, whichever is decided by the council.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Holden.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. Counselor Kaler, floor is open.
I have nothing. I was just seconded.
Yeah. Understand.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Contract is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item M. And the last, from Committee of the Whole. To approve Minnesota Security Consortium Professional Services Agreement to provide the CISO services from October 21st, 2025, until December 31st, Is Mr. Ojala, is this something you would like to explain to us? So we have an understanding of what a complete understanding? Thank you.
Counsel, Mayor? Yeah, I'm happy to discuss it. I see that Demetrius Hilton is in the Zoom meeting also. But he's already been very helpful in helping us with the State Bureau of Criminal Apprehension Audit, which, you know, once the Police Department was off on its own, you know, we were subject to, just because we're subject then to FBI-level SEDIS standards, you know, it's, you know, for criminal justice information. And, you know, it takes a lot of expertise with somebody who's dealt with such audits in the past successfully, and Demetrius has been, you know, very instrumental in helping us with that. And just providing general guidance on securing our information and data for the Police Department and also for the, you know, for the city in general. So, yeah, I think it's a very good, a good fit for the city and very much needed at this time, especially, you know. Even if I weren't leaving, I would, I would say that he's, his services have been instrumental, but, you know, now even more so.
Thank you. And this, the reason I wanted to have you come forward was this is an integral piece of the Police Department and some of the things we have to do to keep that department running.
That is correct.
Is there discussion or questions for Mr. Ojala?
Just that I concur with Todd, once being the lassle, as I call it, with FBI and the SEDIS stuff from my previous job, I like this. I always keep getting to visit every now and then my past there, but, yeah, it's very, and he is correct, it's little, especially this part, I didn't do that part, that was, but, yeah, the firewalls and all that stuff, so, yeah, very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler. And Holden, is there any discussion on this professional services agreement? Seeing none, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Approved unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you very much. I look forward to working with you and your city.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item seven. Review and discuss charter amendment process and determine next steps. I see that there is a memorandum dated October 16th from you, Chelsea, which I'll hand over the floor for you to explain. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So following the last Charter Commission meeting, a motion by Member Droba and passed unanimously, excuse me, asked me to review the 2024 procedural requirements and that satisfaction for the 2024 Charter Amendment. So I went back through and worked with Kami Koschik over at the paper, I worked with Betty and a little bit with Lisa, to, to kind of make sure all of those steps were provided. It wasn't a unique way that this charter was trying to be passed, it was just one of the, the ways that you can. So the thought process to pass this charter amendment was by ordinance, which is controlled by Sub-7 of 410. And what that requires is you have your first reading, and then within a month, you have to have the public hearing, and then you have to have your second reading, along with publishing it in the paper. This one was super long, so it was just a summary. Typically, you have to publish the whole thing. And then after that, so for the city, we did the 20, July 5th, 15th was the second reading, July 1st was the first reading. There was never a public hearing on the matter. But publication did get completed on July 26th, so out of the four steps, one was missed. The process of passing by ordinance is, it's voted on, you do the readings, whatever. Then you have to wait 60 days to see if a referendum is proposed by citizens via petition. If no referendum, then 90 days after, the ordinance goes into effect, changing the charter. Anyway. So the other part that I was asked, asked to look into is what happens if we miss that step? And those steps are created to, to perfect charter amendments, is basically the terminology used. So by missing one of those steps, it wasn't followed appropriately, it wasn't perfected. So what happens, is where it gets confusing, is technically, we function under the old charter. And we should have been functioning under the old charter, because it wasn't perfected. So we have a few options to kind of figure out where we go from here. From a legal standpoint, just to calm everyone down, I'm not concerned about any sort of litigation for following the new charter. It was all good faith, that there was good faith reliance on it, that's an exception to being sued. So I do think we're okay, at least on that front. Essentially, you have four kind of options. I'm going to do the option that I don't recommend first, which is to do nothing. At the very least, I think the city needs to acknowledge it on some basis and take some forward action, because otherwise, we're just kind of in limbo, and it's confusing for citizens, it's confusing for you, it's confusing for me. So I do think something at least should be done. So options you can do is you can cure and reenact the ordinance, which means we go through the same steps again. You would do your first reading, second reading, public hearing, that would, we'd actually get done, and then the publication, and then we'd wait 60 days for the referendum. If there's no referendum, then reenact in 90 days. That's option one. The second option is we can kind of just proceed and push it to a vote. And just immediately put it to the vote. If it passes, great. If it doesn't, it doesn't. We can seek some sort of declaratory clarification from the courts. I don't recommend that one either. That's more just supplemental, and you'll you'd still have to do either the option to cure or to submit to the voters anyway. So that one isn't really necessary. And then the last one, that's kind of just by itself, is you can just maintain under the old charter and, and essentially do nothing, but not really do nothing, because I would recommend you have some sort of resolution that says, we acknowledge the imperfection of the prior attempted charter amendment, but we are not going to cure it, start it over, we are going to leave it as is, with a specific recognition that we're following that prior charter, 2024 amendment never happened. So it's still kind of doing nothing, but it's on paper, we're recognizing what, what's controlling here.
Thank you for putting this together and presenting to the council. I know that this is technical at any level, and even harder for many of us to understand. If I understood you right, because it was good faith, unless the city was sued, you don't foresee any challenges to how we do business?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. Up until this point. But that's why I don't recommend do nothing now, because now we know about it, doing nothing, we run into some hairy situations, because we're no longer acting in good faith under the 2024 amendment.
To begin with, would you be looking for the council to take any action in terms of acknowledging that we should be following the old charter at this point?
At, yes, at the very least. Even if it's in the interim and you want to think about it longer, at least something in the interim acknowledging the 2024 amendment was not perfected appropriately, so therefore we're under the prior charter. Not saying you have to decide whether you want to go forward and, and push the change through again or not, but at the very, at the very, very least, in the interim, acknowledge that we're functioning under the old charter.
And that's something we could do tonight?
Yes.
And that would also because of this, the paper shuffle, I think on our website, I haven't looked at it recently, the, the 2024 charter is on there, and there will be a timeframe, and this will take time to acknowledge that, is what I'm trying to convey.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, before we proceed, is there a motion to acknowledge that we should be operating under the prior charter per Chelsea's evidence this evening?
And that, Chelsea, that was your recommendation, right?
Yeah. And add to that motion, that's the charter, then, from this point forward, we're going to operate under the old charter. If you can add that ending language.
Until changed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to do such by the council?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Is there support for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. More discussion at this time. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. That motion passes unanimously, that we have acknowledged that, per Chelsea's advice, the city will be operating under the old charter, pre-2024. Thank you. In terms of if the council, is the council at any risk operating under the old charter now? Meaning, we don't have to rush forward tomorrow?
No.
Okay, that's, thank you.
No, you have time.
Okay. So this is something that we could put on the agenda for Committee of the Whole, or?
Absolutely.
That would probably be a good way to go.
And?
And discuss, give us some time to, what we want to do. Obviously, you know, I have no problem just doing it by ordinance, again, being on the other. That's how we did it before, and we missed the one step. But also going under the old charter, it isn't really going to change anyway how we do business. I mean, it's, they're basically the same, except for some wording and a few things. And the major things that were changed, the bonding and the Civil Service Commission, were already done, were already amended earlier in the process, so this will give us time to decide how we want to go about this.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler. And then this, we have another agenda item, but it's going to be about the charter, in case the two are blended together, and this is something that the Charter Commission could be added to that agenda as well. Which Mrs. Lundeen, who is here this evening, is the chairperson of. Moving on to item eight, unless was there any other information regarding that specific item to be discussed?
Not for me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, do we need a motion to move it to?
Oh, yeah, if that's what you want to do.
That was, sure, I'll move.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Is there discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. It's approved unanimously. Do have a discussion at the Committee of the Whole in regards to the future of the Item eight. Acknowledge certificate of sufficiency memo for the petition to modify charter to limit levy to 3% and discuss next step. I'm anticipating a significant amount of discussion on this topic at this time. At this time, I would invite Lois Lundeen, our chairperson of the Charter Commission, forward. And as well, you're already up here, Chelsea, and welcome, Lois.
Thank you.
And the idea is to explain where we're, excuse me, currently at, in the process. The city received a citizen's petition seeking a charter amendment here a few weeks ago, for lack of better terms, in which was found petition, or, excuse me, sufficient by our administrator. And if you'd like to give an update on the process or where we're at today, that would be fantastic.
I can do that. I'll give everyone, just for the benefit of everyone who is listening, the petition was received by me from Ed Bates on September 19, forwarded over to Betty Bergstrom on September 20 for her review the following Monday. This, the Charter Commission met, and we reviewed all of the criteria that was outlined in Statute 410.12. There are five key points that they needed to, that we all needed to review, to make sure that all of the requirements for the amendment were were present and that it was sufficient. After the Charter Commission reviewed each of those bullet points, one by one, we took a, we had a vote, there were nine people there of the 10, and it was a unanimous vote that everything was sufficient from our standpoint for the amendment. And we forwarded it on then to Administrator Bergstrom, so that the next part of the validation could happen. And that was the review of the actual petition, to make sure that the signatures were all from registered voters and that they were all eligible and valid. And that part of the petition was also found sufficient. We did receive some notification from the city attorney that there were questions about the, the amendment proposal itself, the 3%. Whether or not that would, there was state law that would support that or not. Those questions were discussed thoroughly at our last charter meeting that we just had. There was lengthy discussion, and a lot of it. And where we landed that night was that, oh, no, we did not talk about it that night. We did not. We have talked about it since. Where the Charter Commission is today is that we have reached out to an independent attorney to review the evidence or the information that was presented by our city attorney, as opposed to what we had deemed, and to advise us and make a recommendation as to next steps, whether this is, whether this 3% levy with the provisions for some flexibility for the City Council, is something that legally can go on the ballot. The provisions in the, that were noted that are in the petition are that, yes, there is a 3%, but then there is flexibility for the City Council to ask the voters for approval or not, if you want to go higher than 3% for specific reasons, or if there is an emergency. So those were the criteria that we reviewed when we looked at, at the 3% at this amendment. That's where we are.
Thank you. That was a very detailed presentation. Chelsea, do you have anything to add?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're?
Yep. So she's correct on all her dates. When Betty was reviewing, she also sent it over to me. When Betty was reviewing, she also sent it over to me. We reached out to the League of Minnesota Cities, who also advised us, this is not a legal ballot question, so it's not just coming from myself, it's also coming from the League of Minnesota Cities. The question about limiting the tax levy to three percent, even with the options to put it to a vote to do more, or to do more than three percent for emergency situations, that authority is strictly reserved for the legislature. Even the city can't do it. It is a state legislature that can enact that, and they've actually done it in the past. They've done it, 2008 to 2014, the legislature enacted certain levy limits during that time. The city does not have that authority. I understand, certainly entitled to a second opinion, the simple Google search comes up with this answer. I have cited case law in my memorandum. I have no doubt they went through every section of 410.12. 410.07, which is under the same chapter, says that such charter shall be consistent with the subject to the constitution and laws of this state. And as your city attorney, even if you get the sufficiency petition from the charter commission and Ms. Bergstrom, the city administrator, I am still advising you, this is not a legal question for the ballot. You can send it to the ballot, and if it goes to vote and it passes, the attorney general will reverse it and turn it down. I've also cited a article from the attorney general from 1982. This is not a new concept. Cities do not limit their own levies, and certainly the citizens cannot do so either. The example I provide is cities have certain legal obligations that they have to pay for, and sometimes a three percent levy will not satisfy those legal obligations. And even if we did say, yes, we can put it to a vote to cover those legal obligations and have a higher levy percentage, there's no guarantee the citizens will approve that. That authority cannot sit with citizens by vote. It can't even sit with you. It sits with the state legislature. So certainly, your timelines are done. They were done as of today. We had the 10, the 10, I turned it back to the charter commission to offer them another 10 to change their opinion. There's no requirement that they change their opinion. That was out of courtesy, to see if they'd like to get on the same page. Certainly can wait for a second opinion. If you want to put it to the ballot, go ahead. We'll deal with the attorney general next year. That's my opinion, and you can accept it, you can leave it, you can get a second opinion. But when the attorney general, if this passes, we have to turn it over to the League of Minnesota Cities, and we will have to pay. My legal opinion is this is an illegal ballot question. It cannot be placed on the ballot.
I want to thank you, Chelsea, for all the work you've done. I'm worried, I am well informed that the attorneys they have for the League of Cities are excellent. I've known that for a long time. And what they say is what goes. And so, I can't vote for anything that's illegal. That's where I'm at. I know, I know the fine attorney people that are at that business, so.
Just for clarification, that Chelsea, when she responded to Ms. Lundeen, said, yeah, feel free to get a second opinion, and Lois reached out for somebody representing the charter commission, not necessarily everybody on the charter commission, because we didn't meet or have a vote on it. I don't have a problem with it, but I just want to make sure that people know that it wasn't everybody from the charter commission and that we didn't vote on, but I'm fine with going, I'm looking for a second opinion. But I do agree with my, with Chelsea.
Thank you. And would your league correspondence on the matter be available to the council?
My what?
The correspondence with the attorneys at the League of Minnesota Cities regarding?
Yes, it's in Betty's email.
Okay, thank you. As Councilor Kaler pointed out, Chairwoman Lundeen has reached out for a second opinion, which was suggested by Attorney Nelson. And is there an update you'd like to give on that?
I did hear from, I submitted a letter with information to this attorney to have her review all of the documentation to date, asked for her objective look, said we simply want to serve the public and the community and make sure that our charter is, that any amendments are, that it's kosher to put them there. She was unavailable last Thursday and Friday. I sent it on Thursday. I received communication from her yesterday, and I expect to hear from her in the next couple of days.
And was there something specifically that you were looking for, for us to acknowledge the suffici, excuse me, the sufficiency of petition?
Your timelines are up today, so you have to determine if it's sufficient in setting it on the ballot or not.
And what are the ramifications of falling outside, excuse me, falling outside of the 10 days?
I would have to research that, but I'm fairly certain the people that submitted it would have a huge issue, and we'd have to deal with that.
Okay, that's, I mean, what I wanted to discuss, because like you, I don't know the answer to that immediately, is there a motion to acknowledge the certificate of sufficiency memo for the petition to modify the charter to limit levy to three percent? And I would assume that means not call an election as well, Chelsea?
Please say it again.
I'm asking if a motion would be appropriate for the council to acknowledge if offered the certificate of sufficiency memo for the correspondence, that the petition was sufficient, but you don't think it's constitutional to place the question on a ballot and us not hold an election?
I didn't say it's not constitutional.
Okay.
It's contradictory to the constitution and state law.
Okay.
Which 410.07 says it cannot be.
Is there any discussion? So your recommendation, Chelsea, is not, to not call an election, or for the question?
Correct.
And in evidence that a second opinion is received, and whether it is or not, that isn't my prerogative here. We know where you stand, and thank you. If we were to receive a contra, if the charter commission was to receive a contradictory opinion, my point in it is, I'm not necessarily saying that you're wrong. You represent us and we've gone through this. I think you have provided us with much information, but I don't want, if we do receive an opinion back that is more favorable, I want to do everything I can to know that the citizens in our community who have citizen-led initiatives are able to do so in a manner that won't be obstructed. It needs to be lawful, of course. So that's my position on it.
I would just like to, I don't think we're being obstructive here. We're just trying to make sure it's legal and it's right and it's the thing to do. I would move, seeing we're still kind of acting, if we table this until we find out the other opinion, if that's what you're looking for, for allowed to do that, would that still qualify us meeting all the timelines?
You'd be outside the timelines, but I did kind of just a quick search. The petition doesn't expire. Potentially, you're looking at failure to complete your duty within 10 days. I haven't had time to look at case law to see what that looks like, if it's some sort of lawsuit for, I don't know, some sort of damages for waiting two days. I'd imagine it's very minimal, if anything. So you can certainly, it appears this way, it doesn't expire or go away. So you could table it for a couple of days if you'd like.
Until there's more, please, Councilor Wagner?
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the amendment, deny, or acknowledge the petition and deny the amendment for vote.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Wagner to acknowledge the petition.
I'll second.
Deny putting the amendment to the vote. First by Councilor Wagner, then Councilor Kaler, and discussion?
So it won't go to the vote?
It won't go to the vote. My, if, if approved, if that motion's approved, my question is, if it's not approved and we receive a different legal opinion, which I think more at this time is about covering the bases of the charter commission, that was Chelsea's recommendation as well, then that may be something that should be reconsidered, I suppose, at the will of the council. Is there more discussion?
So, I want to do what our attorney recommended. I want to stay out of this, and I won't vote for anything that's illegal. And so, I want to mention that again. So the way this is, Tim, the way you've got it set up is, there won't be a vote. All right.
More discussion?
If I may.
Please.
I'm confident in my position, and I'm not sure what's happened since I've gained employment here. I'm not willing just to upset the citizens of High Falls or to get a certain point made. I'm not willing to commit legal malpractice, which if I was wrong, and I'm pushing this so hard, and you rely on my actions and something bad happens, that's why I have malpractice insurance. There is no one I dislike enough here or in the entire city that I would risk committing legal malpractice and losing my license for. This is just what I do. I have a legal obligation to provide you the most accurate information I possibly can.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chelsea. More discussion?
And that's why I'm following her advice like Mike, so we, it's all part of us trying to make, it's not, it's not that I'm against it or for, it's, it's, we don't, we're getting advice that it isn't even a legal petition, and there's good chance if it went anyhow, if we went, put it on the ballot anyhow and it passed, that the attorney general will get involved and would say the same thing. So I'm just thinking it's probably the most prudent thing to do is stop it before it gets that far.
Thank you, Councilor Kaler.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, please.
Please.
Is it an appropriate request to ask to wait until the second opinion comes before action is taken? Could it be tabled?
Mr. Mayor, call the question. I call the question.
I believe to do that, you would need a motion to do so, in which, then I will.
Call the question.
You need a motion?
Would you second?
Yeah.
I will call the question at this time.
Aye.
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 I'll vote no. Motion carries four one and has passed. Thank you. Number nine, discuss International Falls ambulance service. There is a, thank you, Mrs. Lundeen.
You're welcome.
There is a roundtable that will be held at Bacchus Community Center. I believe at 1:00 or 1:30 PM, I don't have my calendar in front of me, 1:00 PM on Wednesday, since the 22nd. We've spent a lot of time discussing what is going on with the service, what the city, what its options are, what ultimately the council may be seeking, and the parties that will be involved that have been invited, excuse me, to the roundtable, city staff that's applicable, Councilor Holden and myself, members of the county board, members of the Rainier City Council, and representatives from the portion of St. Louis County that falls inside of our primary service area. Is there any other info from the council on the ambulance service at this time?
So we got a meeting coming the 28th, is that?
On Wednesday, that, this coming Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday.
Yep.
We better make it quick and big for them.
And given, we understand.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion on the ambulance?
For clarification, I believe, members of the hospital, Rainy Lake Medical Center, were also invited.
Yep.
For, for reference.
Thank you.
Yep.
Then we had two additions to the agenda. The first was from Rainy Lake Medical Center, a request for proclamation, National Rural Health Day on November 20, 2025. I would be happy to read the request if the council would like. I see a head shake from Councilor Kaler.
You could.
You'd be willing to make?
I'd make a motion that we're all for Rural Health Day here, and understand the, yeah.
Is there support for Councilor Kaler's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Wagner. Discussion?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, I didn't call it, but I think that would suffice unanimously. Thank you. And last of the additions, there were two that we approved, not the original three, we have received a request from Linea Emhoff, representing Independent School District 361, requesting a letter of support in a grant application they're making to the Rotary Club in the amount of $60,000. The funding would help bring to life the Early Education Outdoor Center, an accessible, inclusive outdoor learning and play space designed to serve children of all abilities. Is there discussion on this or a motion to write them a letter of support with their application?
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilor Wagner.
Thank you, Councilor Bowler.
Is there discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. That letter of support is passed unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we can move on to the audience open forum. Please, if you come forward, name an address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. We didn't add it. Good evening.
Thank you, council. My name is Lois Lundeen. I live at 2222 Third Avenue East. I have two questions I'd like to clarify about items that were discussed earlier in the, in the meeting. The first, Jason Fisher, I'm wondering if you can confirm for me, please. We talked about the water treatment change, is there, and you said that there would be no additional costs for the, for the project, correct? Is there a cost for the change order?
What do you mean? Like the engineering cost or?
Correct.
Their profit price minor, it's just part of the project management package, so.
Typically, change orders come with a charge. That's why I'm asking the question, if there were.
It would have been noted there if there was a charge.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Pardon me.
And one of the things I'd like to point out, because I think you asked a valid question, is that the construction manager at risk that was chosen, that the price is a guaranteed maximum price by the C Mar in that whole package for the water plant.
Very good. The reason that I asked is that when we did, when we installed new boiler, we installed new electrical and things, if we had change orders, there was an affiliated cost. So I just, I was curious about that, whether there was or not. The second line, the second question that I have is regarding the security cameras. And when I looked through the packet, I saw the total charge that is listed here for both the city and for the, that will come from the grant is, each is $4,136.12, and it matches up to the equipment that you're going to order. So, Mr. Mayor, when you asked if there were additional costs, I'm curious to know if there will be costs for installation and for software and, and things of that nature. I don't, I didn't see any of that listed here.
We will be managing that internally, so that's something we discussed when we installed it internally. It's, it's, what she needs on their side, and he said we can go ahead and move.
But we, we don't know yet what any of that cost will be to install or for the software, any?
That's included, the, the camera cost and all of that are included in that, in that overall price. in that overall price. What you're asking is what will the installation cost be?
Installation, software, annual.
These are internal employees to get that into it, so. Do you want to know those specific costs? I, I don't have that yet.
No, I just, I was very curious if there were going to be additional costs, because what, what this is, is what's going to come in the box, correct?
That is equipment and that is the services for the cameras.
Okay, very good. That was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any additional comments this evening to come before the council? Seeing none.
Hi. Can you hear me? This is Michael with ESX Technology Solutions. Sorry, I missed the first part when people were talking, but I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know what we're doing right now for you guys. We work with Todd, obviously he's now just part-time with you guys. But we do your managed endpoint detection, we do your managed firewall, and then we also helped Todd with the project at the water plant, getting your networking set up. I did give Todd a statement of services where we kind of proposed what we could do is we could take on managing your networking. So then the talent pool that you guys have, you don't have to get a tier-two level person. You could just get a tier-one, or Todd has mentioned that he would be able to, with his job he's moving to, be able to still help out, where we can then manage your networking, make sure that all, that everything's good to go for you guys, help out with everything, obviously, but you would just have a tier-one that you're looking for. So that's what, I think Todd did give it to you guys, I'm not 100% sure. But if you need that, I'd be happy to send it over. But that's what we proposed to Todd, and I believe he brought it over to you guys.
And if we could get that information to add to committee of the whole, which the date is going to escape me, we would want to discuss those proposals as, excuse me, we get the job internally posted and an RFP out, which then we would resume discussion as a council on the topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more comment this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Rhonda Benedict, 909 Sixth Street. I don't have anything wrote down. I have lots of things flying in my head, so I'm just going to speak, all right? I just want to say one thing. I find a lot of things that happen up here very unprofessional. I find Chelsea's attitude towards people unprofessional. I think she's very unprofessional. How snippy, snotty, snooty she becomes. How she chirps at people, but then pretends she's the victim. I find that sometimes I feel city council isn't really for the people. I find that our voices aren't being heard. I find that the reason that these seats are being filled lately is because the voices aren't being heard. The reason that this petition came forward for the 3% is because the overspending has gotten so ridiculous and the taxes keep going up and up and up. And people have just had enough. We, the people are pissed because the solution to the overspending and the city being in financial distress is to just keep raising your citizens' taxes. That's your solution. So as ridiculous as the 3% is, which it is ridiculous, we all know that, that's a slap in the face to you people. Because it's the only thing that you stand up and listen to. It is ridiculous. 3% is ridiculous. But we're saying it because you're not listening. People don't have more money, more money, more money, just like you don't have more money to spend on a police station and a, a, a whole new garage for the Vector truck, which is the most ridiculous thing. Look at $16,000 to put in a new garage door, pretty simple. But less acts for 2.75 million to build a new garage. There's simple solutions out there. It's a ridiculous thing to ask for and we know that, but there's a reason for it. Because you aren't listening. People keep telling me, thank you, thank you for standing up. There's people in the county that can't vote that wish they could. I get stopped all the time. Thank you, thank you for going up there. Keep speaking, keep speaking. Do you think we want to come here? Do you think we want to spend our time up here bitching at you? We don't. It's not fun. I have better things to do with my time. Everybody has better things to do with their time. It's not fun. Do I want to begrudge all you? No, I don't. People can't afford their frickin' taxes. What don't you get about that? I have people telling me all the time, I have two people that are both teachers and one guides in the summertime. They're going to sell their house. They haven't even had their house out long. They're going to sell their damn house and go move in with his mom and take care of her till she passes away, because they can't afford their taxes. And they both work. I have people telling me all the time that they're, they have to sell their home, that they're going to move. So not only are you putting people through distress, you're actually depopulating our town. And when the people can't afford it, guess what? Then they're going to need low-income housing. So then you're going to be stuck building more low-income housing, which is going to cause more stress for the county. The county's going to have to pay for more low-income people. So we don't want to be here. We don't want to be bitching at everybody. It's not fun. It's stress for us, it's stress for you. It's ridiculous. 3% is ridiculous. We know that. But it's the only thing that makes you stand up and listen. It's ridiculous. We know that. But you're not listening. People can't keep affording for you to raise taxes every single year. Two, $3,000, people are paying for their taxes. You can't afford to fix your car. You can't afford to frickin' fix anything on your home. Can't afford to hire a plumber. I'm glad you guys can. 90% of the frickin' community can't. You are very unprofessional. You can smile all you want.
Thank you.
I don't care. There's been people up here way more than five minutes before, and I'll go back through every single city council meeting and show you.
Thank you, Ms. Benedict.
Remmel Calder, 1901 Sixth Avenue East.
Good evening.
I want to second what she just said. The problems this city has incurred fall on you. I can't believe all the expenses you have approved when we're, when the city is in financial crisis. It makes no sense. I just think everything she said, you need to listen to. The letters I write to the paper, it's unbelievable how many people come up and slap me on the back and say, right on. You need to keep it up. I asked you at one point about state statute 169.98. Are you giving this city council the same advice you gave tonight to Lois? That you stand behind your opinion? And that opinion is that the Police Department is fine with those colors?
The same basis? It is not the same legal basis.
Would you give this city council advice to go ahead and keep the colors on our squad cars as they are, knowing what it says in statute 169.98?
On the squad vehicles?
Yeah.
Yes, I would say it's compliant.
Could I ask you another question?
Yes.
How much is it for billable, billable hours when you go to court for the city?
Our billable hours, no matter what type, are 140 an hour. My standard rate is 250 an hour.
Well, if this goes to court, I'm not going to let this go. And if you people think that black and gray are distinguishable colors compared to black and white, if I asked third graders the same question and showed them two pictures, one of the squad cars in this town, one of the squad cars in Duluth, and asked third graders and explained to them what distinguishable means, I would ask those third graders, which one of these pictures is a distinguishable color? I think third graders wouldn't agree with you four guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Nancy M. Hoff, 339 Third Street. The way that you guys, Mr. Wagner especially, cut off the, the commissioner, Lois, inquiring about a second opinion and the way that you all voted, just thanks again for making it very clear that what the people want really doesn't matter to you. It's not what the people want. You're, you know, you could have given us that much to at least get a second opinion. But it, it's just, it's just really clear that what you guys want is, has nothing to do with what the citizens want. And I agree with the spending. It's just, we asked 3% because somehow we got to get through to you guys that there's a limit. There needs to be a limit. I realize for eight years or so, you haven't realized that, because we are where we are right now. But there has to be a limit. In every meeting we come to, you just keep approving expenditures and it's mind-boggling to me. It's, there's never a no vote on spending anything, so. But it, but the main thing I'm taking away from this is that what the citizen want, citizens want means nothing to you.
Good evening.
Mary Wilson, good evening. Mary Wilson, 1711 First Avenue East. You approved to start the Smokey Bear, to replace the pavilion? Can, we see a picture of what you are voting on, that you've said you, you've accepted? I, I never saw a picture.
Is there packets?
It is in the packet.
I don't have a packet. They don't have enough packets for everybody.
I, we can get you one.
Thank you.
And I would add that during the first community presentation, we, an open house, I don't remember if it was July and August, we did present three different options. The ban shell was, I'm sorry, excuse me, was deemed to be the choice made by the community to be rebuilt, is that, is what we had. I know the committee worked on it and with some folks that have volunteered to help that Counselor Kaler mentioned. So.
So it, it's the one that's the, similar to what we originally had?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, that's what I wanted to know, because I haven't seen any of this.
You're, you're welcome, and I, I would add to it that we had a lengthy discussion on the ban shell at the committee of the whole meeting in regards to what's the cost going forward, and we cannot answer that, which is why we're soliciting bids for the project. Now, I believe I would, I would have to ask Betty, but I think we have somewhere around $550,000, give or take, to, to put towards the project. And if we don't have the money, it's been suggested that there be fundraising, I think originally by Mr. Lukachik. And if we don't have the money to rebuild it, I think it'll be up to the council, but I, there isn't extra money to go around right now. So until we have a price, we don't know. Maybe we can build it for half of $500,000. But that's where the process is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no further comment at this time, would like to add a reminder that the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 5:30 PM. There's no further business to come before the council. The meeting is adjourned.